Good evening, welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February 16th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag, please.
Salute to the flag. Of the United States.
To the Republic.
One.
Under God.
Invisible. With over.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please? Take role?
Yes, Mr. Galloway.
Yeah.
Mr. Baraski.
Here.
Mr. Dent.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
And I'm here.
All right, thank you. Item number one tonight is public comment. Kyle, do we have anyone for public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. Item number two, certificate. This idiot Main Street for rear patio enclosure. Mr. Tekeeta, do you want to walk us through this?
The board is being asked to consider a certificate of appropriateness for rear patio enclosure at 88 Main Street in Fallsington. The Historic Architectural Review Board for Fallsington did approve this or accepted this back in February 9th of this year.
All right, thank you. Any, we have pictures in front of us. Any questions from board members? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Baraski?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Rocco?
I have none, thank you.
And Mr. Palmer?
No, I have none.
And I have none. Looks like it'll be a nice addition. So is there a motion to approve this certificate of appropriateness for 88 Main Street?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right. Item number three is going to be. Um. Because this is going to go to a later date, correct? Mr. Clark, this is being removed completely.
That is correct. Item number three is preliminary and final land development for Bum Holdings. After discussing it with their attorney today and realizing that there are still a couple of issues that need to be worked out. They have asked that this be pulled off of tonight's agenda and agenda and listed for a future agenda.
All right, and number four is a conditional use. So we have to open a conditional use hearing, correct? Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Done moved.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Clark, you want to walk us through this one?
Thank you, Mr. Dent. This is a conditional use hearing. The property is 84 Everturn Lane. The tax map parcel number is thirteen dash oh two six dash oh three three. Within the last day or so, it was discovered that there were some issues with respect to the notices that were sent to the neighbors. After consulting with the applicant, it was determined that we would open this hearing and then continue it until March 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Falls Township Meeting Room or in this virtual meeting so that the applicant can cure any issues related to the notice. So it would be appropriate right now would be a motion to continue this matter until March 15th, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the Falls Township Meeting Room or by a virtual meeting.
All right, is there a motion then?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Uh, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. So I guess we close the meeting now, the hearing.
That's correct. Well, no, because we've continued it. So the record stays open, so we don't need to close it. So we've continued it, so the record remains open.
All right, so um, we're done with item number four then.
Correct. Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Brown Dorf. Nice seeing you.
Thank you.
Next month, I guess.
Yep. Bye.
All right, item number five, consider a pro- a proposal from FX Brown for Act 101 Recycling Grant. Mr. Tekeeta?
Board is being asked to consider a proposal for the completion of your Act 101 Recycling Report requirements for the year 2020 by FX Brown Incorporated in the amount of twenty, sorry, fifty-two hundred dollars. This is a four hundred dollar increase from last year.
All right, um, any questions from board members? Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you noticed offhand, but what do we, what do we bring in from this grant?
I do not know that number offhand. I know Betsy is available for, I can check with her real quick.
That's okay. We've been doing this for quite a few years now.
Yeah, we definitely pays for itself, that's for sure.
Yeah, oh yeah. Okay.
Live room.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, Betsy's is in the room now.
Oh, okay.
That was easy.
Betsy, off the top of your head, do you happen to know how much we took in on the recycling for last year?
It was over fifty thousand and I did just receive notification that we'll be receiving a direct deposit for the nineteen grant and that is over fifty thousand as well. I want to say fifty-four thousand off the top of my head. But I know for a fact it's over fifty.
So fifty-two hundred dollars is a great investment.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it is.
I think that should answer questions. Is anybody else, Mr. Palmer, do you have any questions?
No, I'm happy. I'm just look, just, you know, what was the four hundred dollar increase? A lot more paperwork this year or something?
Um, yes, they actually had to write several letters to a couple of the haulers to get their numbers reported. And that is sometimes very difficult to track down the figures that we need to submit for that grant money. And they are very good at that and very aggressive and they make sure they get all the tonnage reported from the various collectors so that we get the highest possible grant amount.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Baraski, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, is there a motion to approve the approval for fifty-two hundred dollars to FX Brown for the Act 101 Recycling Grant?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. I think this is item number six, consider proposals for the postage machine for the township. I assume we're buying a new stamp machine, Mr. Tekeeta?
Uh, yes, we are looking to upgrade. We're going to stay with STR business and upgrade the machine we currently have to a Pitney Bowes machine. And Betsy is here as well to answer any questions you may have on this.
All right. Any questions for Mrs. Rukoff, Mr. Rocco?
Um, just really a simple one. Looks like there's a few different quotes in here and it wasn't really too easy to compare because they all have different features and whatnot, but if we can make sure we look to see if any, anybody within Falls Township offers these services and we get a quote from them, a video, may only ask if we're not already doing that.
What is the, okay, Mr. Palmer, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. Baraski?
No, Mr. Rocco, great point. I have no questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, I have no questions then. Is there a motion to approve this proposal for the postage machine?
I'll make the motion approved.
I'll sec- second it with the caveat of Mr. Rocco.
All right, um, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Galloway?
Yes.
Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay. Item number seven, consider, consider proposal for geographic information system services from Carroll Engineering Corporation. This is, now this is a equipment that we already own, Mr. Tekeeta, that we want to get operating correctly?
That's correct. Carroll Engineering will be the ones to set up the new GS environment using the Ezra products we currently own.
Do we, do we consult with any of our engineers that we have on staff, either Jones Associates or Remington Burnick Beach? And this is something that they do?
This is, now, this is not, this is something outside of the scope of what they're capable of doing and Carroll Engineering is an authorized Ezra Business Partner.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll provide training. They'll, they'll do all the setup, modify existing maps and then provide training for staff.
Gotcha. Um, any questions for Mr. Tekeeta on this?
Yeah, I do. So in like, simple terms, what is this, what is this gonna, what's the benefit of this, I guess, for for you and for maybe, you know, taxpayers of Trisone?
The, so for the township as a whole, um, J, this, the RCHIS system that we're going to have can be used by every department. Code Enforcement, Parks and Rec, Public Works, Police, Fire, Township Engineer, as well as Finance. There's a, there is a public interface so that information can be relayed back to the public. All of this information, as far as all the geographic layers and all that data is available to the public. It'll help us as far as our data tracking for the Police Department, Fire, as well as Public Works. The package, the package that we have with all the different solutions allows us to do internal inventory of all our assets as well. So there, there's a tremendous benefit having this GIS system.
Yeah, sounds like it. Thank you.
And this is something we had that we've never used?
That's correct. It was never installed, so we're getting it installed. So if, if you were to approve this, then we can move forward.
I was, I was confused when I read the agenda. I thought this was something that had to do with the North Point and the US Steel Property. Um, any questions for, uh, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, a question for you. It's going to show all the utilities, I'm assuming, like Stormwater, so which would help the township for PA one calls?
It will, it will help to some extent, but you still, you still have to do the PA one call. That, that would not relieve anybody with that responsibility. Using those maps would not be a substitute for that. But as far as what utilities we have, anything that we currently have is data, we can create a base layer immediately. And then we will continue to do additional data. It will help out with our MS4 program, any kind of stormwater maintenance, as well as sewage maintenance that we will want to have. You know, any programs we want to start with that.
And how's that, um, used in the field? Through tablets or do they have? Or do we have other sorts of, uh, display monitors?
The, the way this system is set up, you can access the GIS through a tablet, laptop computer, or on your phone.
Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions, thank you.
And this is something the engineer's office can use as well?
Yes, this is going to be heavily used by the township engineers once the Code Enforcement Department.
All right, sounds good to me. Sounds like a good deal. Great that we can finally get this equipment we bought you working. Um, is there a motion to approve this proposal then?
I'll make the motion approved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item number eight, consider adopting ordinance amending chapter, chapter 172 Smoking to add Article Three Township owned property. Basically, the township campus here is going to be smoke-free, which, you know. I know there's only one of us that I know that smokes, so I apologize to him, but um, this is something we've been talking about for quite a while. It just took a while to get done. Um, is there anything else we need to add to that, Mr. Clark?
Uh, no, it's just, uh, what the ordinance, we've done it before by ordinance when we banned smoking in the community park. So we thought to be consistent since it's township-owned property that we would, uh, we would do it by ordinance here.
We didn't ban smoking in the community park, only in playground.
Regulated where, where it could be.
Right, right. All right, thank you. Is there any questions needed from board members? Mr. Rocco?
None.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Galloway?
None.
Mr. Baraski?
So is this all township property or are we referring to just a municipal complex?
No, just a municipal complex, just this campus.
Right. We've already dealt with it on other township-owned property.
Right, I mean, there's, there's an effect that allowed, like, you can't smoke within a fifty foot of where, where children play, whether it's
Right.
All sporting events, the playground, the baseball courts, but, you know, you can, you can, you can fish and have a cigarette at the Township Park. So I was just kind of clarifying that for anyone who might be watching or listening or doing an article on this.
That's why I said it too. Um, so is there a motion then?
I make that motion.
Ah.
Second it, please.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And when will this go into effect? Mike, tomorrow?
Um, I think there's five days on this before it goes into effect. I'm not, I don't have it in front of me, so, but yeah, it's usually, usually five days or thirty days, and I think we did a five-day on this one.
Can you text Lauren and find out for sure?
I certainly can.
It, it's, it's in front of me. It's five days from.
Sorry, I couldn't resist. Item number nine, consider resolution to amending township of Falls in the Handbook Sections Five, Ten, Five-Eleven, and Five-Twelve. Mr. Clark, you want to explain this one to us?
This is this is an amendment to the Township Employee Handbook dealing with what is essentially known as an acceptable use policy related to township, computer hardware, computer software, use of handheld devices and, and social media. And so what this is doing is just placing certain policies and procedures in place for the use of these devices, these township-issued devices on township time or at any time you're using a township-issued device.
Okay, any questions from board members?
No, I mean, this is probably long overdue. It's pretty standard in
Yep.
In the corporate world, so.
Mr. Palmer?
I'll go with it.
Mr. Galloway?
No, no questions.
Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
And Mr. Tekeeta, is there anything you want to add?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so is there a motion? Are we going to do all this at once, right, Mike?
Yes.
Is there a motion to amend the, or passing the resolution to amend the employee handbook?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Rocco, can you, or I guess we can just vote on this, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Who's, none? Okay.
Do we need the resolution number?
Does it matter?
Matt, what resolution number is this?
Sorry, lead to the game here.
Hold on.
Can't be too deep, can it?
Twenty twenty-one. Oh, three, I'm going with.
Right.
It, yes, twenty-one, now, I'm sorry, it's twenty twenty-one oh four.
Oh, four. Okay, so we passed that, then we're good, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Item number ten, consider authorizing for advertisement for tree trimming and removal of tree services in Falls Township. Mr. Tekeeta?
Board is being asked to consider authorization of that, of course, for tree trimming and removal of tree services in Falls Township. The seal bids would, are to be received by the township on, by March ninth, 2021.
And this is pretty straightforward. We amended this quite a bit before last season, I believe, Mike. Mr. Clark?
Yes, we made, uh, we made significant changes to, uh, to this bid.
All right, any questions or comments from board members, Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I know you guys are probably ready to come in. Is, is Jason in the room or?
Jason is available for questions.
I, I had the same question.
Come out and bring Jason.
I'll bring Jason right now.
It's like Jay's here.
I'm here.
All right, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Lawson, hi.
Hi.
I just had a quick question. We've been doing this probably three years. It's maybe a third or fourth year. And you're, do you have any idea when we're going to be done? Possibly done doing this, uh, all this cleanup? It's, 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 it's pretty significant what we spend yearly on this. I was just wondering if you had any idea.
It is, um, Jeff and, and, or Mr. Rocco, I'm sorry, but, um, we, we have had conversations with Pete and maybe we should bring him back up with Matt. Joe Jones is aware of it. One of the conversation is, is actually the bringing a company to do harvesting. And basically that, what that is, is what they do up at the mountains. They go through the township property. They take out the dead trees and, and anything that, you know, is significant enough for them to use to allow the, you know, the property to flourish again. You know, it was something that was discussed. I don't know where it went. Again, I talked with Pete and Joe. Um, and maybe that's a conversation that me and Joe should have with Pete, I mean with Matt, now that Pete is gone. We wouldn't, I don't believe that we would have to pay for this service of someone coming in and harvesting. Um, I think that we would actually maybe get it done for free or get paid, depending on how much would they take out. There is an awful lot of, um, you know, acreage that we own that it's just overgrown and, and, you know, there's enough acreage that we do own that would allow us to go out to a company for harvesting, um, the wood.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I was just trying to, from a planning standpoint, try to figure out how many, how many more years we're going to budget a lot of money to get, to take care of these trees and maybe it's forever, I don't know.
Isn't that what we've been doing? These guys have been taking away the dead trees? Am I mistaken?
Yes, they've been taking out dead trees along, um, actually residence properties. So we've been mostly working, last year we worked mostly in Trenton Road Park. Um, we did some clearing over in a small piece of property that we have off Amesbury and that. Um, but a lot of the trees, if you drive in Vermillion Hills, you know, them trees are sixty, seventy feet tall that back up to them houses. And they're right at the property line and a lot of them are dead um, and dying from all the stuff that we've had the last few years. The Emerald Ash Bore. Now they're spinning, uh, spotted lanternfly and, and just age and decay itself. Um, so that's why I feel that, you know, one of the things, if we could possibly look into harvesting, you know, they'll come in, clear everything back and, and get it to where, where the trees would be more healthier. Instead of them growing so tight together and choking one another out and, and killing them. I'm not a tree expert, but that's just stuff that I've read and talked with other people about.
You just play one on the Township Supervisor channel?
I'm sorry, what?
I was kidding. That sounds good to me.
Any other questions, Mr. Palmer?
No, 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 I'm on board.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Baraski?
Hey, um, Jay, it's Jeff B. I was kind of curious, is this, is this the same as the, um, like the guys that are doing emergency work as part of this budget money for that? Like if we have a tree fall in township at, you know, whatever during the day or at night, um, is this, is this the same? We're putting this bid in for those guys as well? Like, that'll be our, our on-call service?
Um, so.
Or is that something different?
It, it isn't, isn't, Jeff. So any tree that fell during a storm overnight, um, ninety percent of the time, the township forces itself takes care of it because it's already fallen, already damaged, whatever. Um, if there was a storm damage where a tree fell and it was leaning towards a house, um, then we would call in this company to take care of it. Uh, because one, they have the higher booms to take care of it. They're insured for it and, you know, it is their professional, you know, profession to do. So if it was just a tree that fell across the road, we would come out, cut it at the curb lines, either take it or push it off the roadway with the backup.
Yeah, and, and, and I think that, you know, our guys, I mean, some residents have unfortunately have seen this, you know, it's not a great situation. Some of them have big trees in Levittown and I've seen our guys work, you know, firsthand, I watched one come down and, and, and was there and, you know, our guys do an amazing job. I was just, um, I was kind of curious if that fell into this, you know, if we had our preferred contractor for that year, um, fell in this agreement. So I appreciate the answer. Thank you.
All right, um, I have no questions. Is there a motion or to advertise for the tree trimming and removal services?
Done moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, no pose. All right, at least, item number eleven. Another authorization to advertise for the Falls Township Community Park Hockey Rink Improvement Project. Um, Ms. Kane from Jones and Associates is here to answer any questions. Where's she? She's down there, okay. Um. Any questions for board members? This is basically us, you know, our hockey rink is very heavily used. Mr. Andrews is here as well and is very, very outdated. And this is basically us just, um, restoring the whole thing. Uh, any questions for? Uh, any questions for Mr. Andrews or Ms. Kane, Mr. Brassi?
Uh, I have no questions, um, at this time.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr., Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I think this was brought up last year, and we talked about advertising down there. Um, I'm just curious, uh, any grant money going towards this?
Brian Andrews, or Brian, do we have any grant money?
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I have a little tech issues with my computer, so I'm on the phone. We have applied for a grant for this. We did apply for it last summer, early fall. We should be hearing soon on that. Uh, we don't have an answer quite yet. Should be coming in any time. Um, so we did apply for a grant, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, any other questions from board members, Mr. Gal, uh, Rocco?
No, none from me, thank you.
And I have none. Um, is there a motion to approve, or we're just advertising, right?
Correct.
Is there a motion to advertise for the hockey rink improvement projects?
So moved.
Okay.
All right, motion made in the second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Andrews and Ms. Kane. Well, consider quotes for fertilizer for township facilities. This is pretty straightforward. True Green is who we're gonna use again. They've been with us for a couple of years now, is that correct, Mr. Lawson?
Yes, they've been, uh, the last, uh, five years that I've been here, True Green has been the company that has been the lowest bidder, and they've held their price, I believe, the last three years.
Yeah, eighteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents. The next closest was Total Lawn and Care, which was twenty-four thousand seven eighty-one. And you're happy with the work True Green does, I guess?
Yes.
All right. Any other, any questions from board members, Mr. Rocco?
None.
Mr. Palmer? Mr. Galloway? Any questions, Mr. Galloway?
Sorry, no.
Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
Okay, so eighteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-five cents, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in the second, can we pull the board, Mr. Rocco?
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brassi?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? I'm a yes.
All right. Thank you. Item thirteen, consider purchase of vehicles for the Public Works Department. How many vehicles do we have on here?
We're proposing to purchase three vehicles.
All right. And these are replacing, I guess, vehicles that we don't use any longer, or that we've worn, no longer live past their lifetime, lifespan?
They're, they're replacing three F-550s that we have that are, um, at the point now that will not pass state inspection. Uh, two of them, uh, the entire cab and cab mounts have rotted out with the floors. Um, and the second one, where I'm stood, sorry, the third one has some broken frame issues from, um, the salt eaten away at the frames. Uh, the one good thing is that all three trucks have aluminum bodies, so we will be reusing the aluminum bodies on new chassis.
Okay, so the three cabs and chassis, forty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars each for a total of a hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Are there any questions for Mr. Lawson? Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
Um, Jay, I guess that was my only question, and you answered. If you can just, um, be a little more specific, so we're, we're buying three, uh, trucks with just cabs, and we're, we have the, the, uh, bodies or the chassis that are, that are gonna get installed?
Uh, yes, so we're buying the three F-550 cabin chassis. Um, they will be outfitted with a new plow, and then also a new main cylinder in the back, and then the bodies will be transferred over to them cabin chassis.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, I think that's awesome, man, getting, um, you know, being able to reuse, um, our investment from however many years ago, and just put it on a new, uh, truck and repurpose the, uh, vehicle, so appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, these trucks are all over twenty years old, and we're reusing the bodies. They will be acid washed and cleaned up and transferred over.
And Jay, just one more quick question, where, where do they do that at?
J and J Bodies.
Is it local?
Um, I believe it's out by Lancaster.
I'm sure it's a specialty job, I was just kind of curious, but thank you.
This, this estimate we have here says it's done by US Municipal.
Yes, US Municipal, uh, J and J Body is, um, a dealer through US Municipal.
Okay.
So we, we had to go through Co-Stars and, and act as the US Municipal.
Okay, so the price of the trucks, and then we also have on here the eighty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars for the body transfers, just to be clear. For a total of two hundred and thirty thousand seven, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, well, uh, this is the Matt. Matt, we have this in the budget, correct?
That's correct, and this, uh, the, the price that, uh, Jason managed to get is twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-seven, uh, dollars, uh, below the budgeted amount.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, is there any other, any public comment needed, Kyle? No?
No public comment.
I guess I should have been asking that before, but, so the total is two hundred and thirty thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Is there a motion to approve this purchase?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in the second, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brassi?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, so now we're gonna purchase more vehicles, item number fourteen for the Parks and Rec Department. We have three. Uh, how many, uh, three quotes, I'm sorry, for two Ford Escapes? Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's replaced in a two thousand six Ford Explorer and a two thousand eight Suzuki Forenza. So the low bid was from Pacifico Marple Ford of twenty-three thousand six hundred and five dollars and fourteen cents. That's for one vehicle, obviously, so that's forty-seven thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-eight cents total. Um, any questions or comments for Mr. Andrews or for Mr. Tekeeta from board members, Mr. Brassi?
Uh, no, just more of a comment, um, uh, just to say out loud, but I know Mr. Andrews and his department, they, uh, deal with hand-me-downs, you know, on a non-stop yearly basis, so it's nice to see them, um, get some new vehicles for themselves.
All right. Mr. Rocco?
Um, just, I'm hoping that the next vehicles we purchase are all powered by electric, so, but, yeah, fine for now.
Right.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
And I have no questions. This is less than the money we approved for vehicle purchases in twenty twenty-one, I guess, in the budget, so we're still under budget. So do we have a motion to purchase vehicles for Parks and Rec, forty-seven thousand? But forty-seven, forty-seven thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty-eight cents?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made in the second, Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board, please?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Brassi?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? I'm a yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, consider amended twenty twenty-one fee schedule for code fire and parks and rec. Mr. Tekeeta, can you take us through this?
The board is being asked to consider amending the existing fee schedule to include fees that would be related to the new rental property inspection program. Uh, the, it is broken out into annual common area inspections, and the cost of those inspections would be at a rate of fifteen dollars per rental unit. And then there's the three-year inspections, which was broken out into the apartment complex, which is fifty dollars per unit, and other residential unit, other, other residential rentals, which would be single-family or, uh, townhouse rental units at a hundred dollars per unit.
Any questions for Mr. Tekeeta?
Uh, pardon, these rates are comparable to the surrounding municipalities.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rocco?
No, I have none.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Galloway?
No question.
And Mr. Brassi?
No questions.
I have no questions. Is there a motion to approve this, then? Item number fifteen, the amended twenty twenty-one fee schedule?
It is resolution, um, oh, five, yes. Twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Second that motion.
All right, motion made in the second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Item sixteen, approval of a grant agreement between Falls Township and Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission Incorporated. I believe Chief Whitney is here to take us through this one.
I am, Mr. Dent. Uh, so this, uh, refers to the Falls Township Supporting Recovery Program. Uh, that's the program where we're bringing on certified recovery specialists uh, to ride with a police officer and handle substance use, uh, calls for service and emergencies in the community, and try to connect people with treatment. So the next three agenda items deal with different aspects of that program. Uh, this one is the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission. They have, uh, agreed to fund this program, uh, uh, annually, uh, at no cost to us, uh, and this is the agreement, uh, between us and them to do that.
All right, any questions for the, for some, Chief Whitney, I'm sorry. Mr. Rocco?
Just thank you, I'm glad we have a grant that, uh, to help this, so appreciate it.
Mr. Palmer?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm glad to see this program come to Falls, thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
And Mr. Brassi?
Uh, no questions, chief. Uh, just appreciate all your work on this. I know you're a super passionate man, and, and, um, it's gonna be, uh, really successful. I got faith in you on this, thank you.
Thank you.
First for Bucks County, I believe, so this is a good thing for Falls Township. And, yeah, a lot of work is put on this all around, and thank you. So, I guess we're gonna approve these one by one. So we're gonna approve the grant agreement first. Item number sixteen, is there a motion to approve the grant agreement between Falls Township and the Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in the second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
All right, item seventeen is an approval of a memorandum of understanding between Falls Township and Family Services Association of Bucks County. This is, you can take us through this one again, chief. This is basically straightforward lawyer talk. Should we have Mr. Clark do this one?
It's actually pretty simple. The, the Family Services Association of Bucks County will be the employer of the certified recovery specialists. They're not Falls Township employees, they work for FSA, and the MOU, uh, just, you know, defines our relationship between the Family Services Association and Falls Township.
Okay, pretty straightforward stuff. And MOU being the memo of understanding, so is there a motion to approve the memo?
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed, none? All right, item seventeen, approval of the, another memo of understa-, oh no, this is seventeen, I'm sorry. Eighteen, approval of the Falls Township Police Department Internal Policy Establishing Police Department Procedures for the Falls Township Supporting Recovery Program.
Yeah, so this, this will be the police department policy. Uh, it defines the role of the CRS, uh, and the role of the police officers that interact with them. Uh, it provides some safeguards for their safety, as does the MOU, uh, just kind of defines, uh, what they will and will not be doing, uh, so that it's clear to everybody.
All right, any questions for Chief Whitney from board members, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Brassi?
Um, chief, just one thing, I don't know, uh, remember if, um, during your, um, during the chief report, have we, have we spoke about this? Like, do you wanna take a minute real quick and just kind of tell, tell, um, uh, the township kind of like what this program's about? I don't know if anybody's at home kind of guessing, or did we already do this?
Sure, I, I certainly don't mind doing that, and thank you for the opportunity. So in Falls Township since twenty-ten, we've had eight hundred and fifty-four overdoses, and a hundred and thirty-one of them have been fatal. So we've lost a hundred and thirty-one people in Falls Township since twenty-ten to overdoses. So, you know, for years, we've been trying to chip away at what we can do to make this better. Uh, we, we've been using Narcan, uh, since it became available for law enforcement in twenty-fifteen. We've been working with different, uh, uh, providers in the area that can connect people with substance use treatment. Uh, and this kind of next levels it, and actually puts a certified recovery specialist, uh, Monday through Friday, eventually from ten to six, we're, they're, they're working eight to four now, but we're gonna change that once we get fully up and running. Um, to be out there to respond to calls for service that involve any, uh, substance use or overdoses. In fact, the two certified recovery specialists that are coming on board, uh, have expressed an interest in EMT training, so the grant covers, uh, the tuition to send them to EMT school this fall. Uh, so they'll be able to actually function as first responders as well as connecting people with treatment. So, you know, all the data indicate that, uh, when a person is in that moment of crisis, uh, recovering from an overdose, uh, that the best time to connect them with treatment is, is then. The, the, uh, rates of successfully placing people in treatment are much higher when we have somebody out in the field to do that, uh, rather than following up hours or days later. So we have high hopes that this program will, uh, will help the people who are suffering in our community.
Yeah, chief, that's perfect. I mean, you, you know, you've explained that to us and myself, and, but, you know, for everyone else that, that knows, or, you know, maybe watching and, 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 um, maybe they'll take advantage of this program, so I appreciate you, um, kind of summing that up for us, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Brassi.
I, I did, did have one follow-up. When, when will this program start?
So we're pretty much ready to go. I mean, we've done orientation with the CRSes. Uh, you know, we had some internal things to do with them, so really, as soon as this is approved and the proper paperwork, uh, gets to me and is filled out by them, uh, we'll be good to go this week.
Awesome.
It's great, thank you.
Chief, um, this has absolutely nothing to do with defunding our police department, correct?
Oh, God, no. That's the last thing we need. I know, this, this is, um, ju- just another effort to, um, to try to, uh, chip away at this problem. I mean, you know, overdose deaths and traffic, uh, crash-related deaths are, are two of the biggest problems we have in terms of what leads people to, you know, accidental death in Falls Township. Uh, th- this is a co-responder model, and, and there's a lot of talk nationwide about the, the, uh, the benefits of co-responder models, but this has nothing to do with, with any criminal justice reform, or, you know, any efforts to impact budget or training of the police department.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right, thank you for the explanation. So is there a motion to approve the internal procedures or policy?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in the second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? All right, let me go, chief, I can sign this stuff for you tomorrow, and we can be on our way.
Thank you, I appreciate the support.
Yep.
Thank you.
Item nine, item number nineteen, appointments to various boards, councils, committees, and commissions. Um, we have several terms that expired and such. I know it's been a really, really tough time past almost a year now, which is hard to believe. Uh, commissions and boards really haven't been meeting as they usually do because of the COVID stuff, but we do have a few openings. I know I'm gonna make a motion, I know there's an opening on the police pension board where Suzanne Hannigan serves that needs to be filled, she has to be reappointed. So I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, reappoint Suzanne Hannigan to the police pension committee.
I'll second that.
All right, a motion made and seconded, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, all right. Are there any other appointments anybody wants to make tonight?
Yeah, I'll make, um, on a disabled persons advisory board, it's a five-member board. Um, two terms have expired, and they both wish, wish to be reappointed, Robert Leary and Elizabeth Royer. I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, motion made in the second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
Um, I'd also like to, for the Shade Tree Commission, Joanne Cosgrove would like to be reappointed. It's a five-year term.
I'll second.
All right, motion made in the second, is it all in favor? I.
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed.
Mr. Dent, I think that's all we had for the folks that wish to.
Right. And I want to point out that the Parks and Rec Board does have one vacancy, if there's anyone that's interested. The Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee has two vacancies. This is a great committee, I mean, it really gives residents an insight on that, what goes on with the traffic control in Falls Township. I know that, you know, one of the biggest complaints I know that, you know, one of the biggest complaints we get is traffic. And our police do an excellent job and they're very limited in what they can do because local police can't use radar in Pennsylvania, which is bizarre, but that's the way it's always been. So this really gives the residents, you know, they field complaints from other residents, that police do a traffic study there, and it's a, it's a great experience. I was on that board for several years before Mr. Rocco took over. So that board has two vacancies, if anyone's interested. The Historic Preservation Commission is a five-member board that has four vacancies. Um, and that, you know, if anybody's interested in that, this is all on our website as well. The Architectural Review Board, you need to be at least a registered contractor of some sort. There's a vacancy on that board. The Environmental Advisory Committee has a vacancy. Um, I also would like to make a motion to advert, we're advertising to the ordinance, we want to change the ordinance for the zoning hearing board, the alternate position, where instead of making it a five-year term, we want to make it a one-year term, Mr. Clark.
Correct, and, yeah, right. So we would need to make that change, and if you want to authorize that, we can, you can do that, authorize advertisement of that, and we get that drawn up, uh, for, uh, for advertisement.
All right, that's the motion I'm making. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Now, for the planning commission, do we have to do the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna make that motion as well for the alternate position this is.
Correct.
Is there?
Nearly created, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Remember, creating a position, a, a, one-year position for an alternate for the.
For an alternate, yes.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Dents, I just want to jump in real quick and say that we're also accepting, uh, letters of interest for both of those positions.
Yeah, correct.
If they're approved.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the minutes from the last meeting. Any, uh, questions or corrections or comments? I wasn't at the meeting, but I did watch the meeting, and excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen. None? Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Turn. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't want to abstain since it wasn't. All right, item number twenty-one, Engineers Report. We have Ms. Kane from Jones and Associates to walk us through the Engineers Report.
She's still here?
Oh, there she is. Thank you.
Hi. Uh, in the month of January, we had five new land developments, two of which are for a minor subdivision, one at Jonathan Way on Cedar Lane and North Point. KA at Fairless has two applications submitted for conditional use and land development approval for the Wawa on Lincoln Highway. Lastly, Lincoln Storage with a self-storage facility on Lincoln Highway. The two minor subdivisions and Tavo Packaging, which was submitted in December for a seventy-seven thousand square foot building addition, will appear at the February Planning Commission meeting. Uh, the remaining applications that were submitted in January are expected to appear at the March PC meeting. Uh, there are no earth disturbance or flood plain applications submitted. As always, updates to the report are highlighted in red. I touched on a few. MM Metals on Middle Drive, work continues on the structural steel for Building Two. JG Perchuti, which is off of Ben Fairless Drive. Site work continues through the various stages of earthwork, storm sewer infrastructure, et cetera. Our steel, there's no activity due to inclement weather, but they intend to be up and running very soon. Uh, no new earth disturbance updates. In terms of township improvements, the 2020 road program has not remobilized. We plan to remobilize mid-March after the weather breaks. I would expect the job to be substantially complete within two to three months after remobilization. Uh, therefore, I think construction will probably be done around mid-May. In the interim, we will be milling and providing limited drainage improvements on Elbow Lane. As for the 2021 road program, the Alderberry Drive design is mostly completed, and we anticipate seeking authorization to advertise in April. If you have any questions? I have to take them.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Kane, Mr. Rocco?
Excellent job, Ms. Kane. No, you, you covered them all. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Boraski?
Uh, great job, Ms. Kane filling in. Thank you.
And Mr. Palmer?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kane. Um, that takes us to our executive session, Mr. Um, Clark.
Yes, Mr. Dents, uh, earlier today, the board held, uh, an executive session uh, to discuss, uh, various personnel matters and, uh, several matters of, uh, potential litigation.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item twenty-four, our police department report. Chief Whitney, I know you have a presentation for us tonight.
Did I do, Mr. Dents?
All right.
We skipped into the bill list, item twenty-two.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry.
Hang on, let me, let me back out of this. Sorry, guys.
Okay, you can hang.
Oh, we could have gone back to it.
Whatever you want to do.
I'm sorry, Chief.
No, it's all right. It's important to pay bills.
I think the chief's done his report. I saw it come up and go.
All right, uh, we have a bill list in front of us. Um, any questions or comments? Mr. Rocco, do you want to summarize this for us, Mr. Rocco?
Sure, yeah. Um, yeah, so the February bill list totals one million, eight hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Um, seventy percent of that is for payroll and benefits, which is about one point two million. Um, there's been some other miscellaneous, um, escrow payouts and, uh, things like that. Our new, um, IT company, um, is doing some infrastructure upgrades, so there's a approximately eleven thousand dollar bill for that. So, that's all I have.
Right, thank you very much. That's the summary of the bill list then. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right. Now, we're ready for our police report. I'm sorry about that, Mr., um, Chief Whitney.
That's quite all right. Uh, you've been very efficient tonight, so I will attempt to be equally efficient as I go through this. Okay, January of, uh, this year, we're at minimum staffing, thirty point six percent of the time, uh, which was down from December. And you can kind of see January's all over the map when it comes to, to the percentage of time that we're a minimum staffing, if you look back from the prior four years. The individual breakdown, uh, is represented here. Uh, group, group A and B days really were above minimum staffing the majority of the time. We either hit or almost hit our twenty-five percent of the time goal there. Uh, group A nights was, um, at fifty percent, but mainly because we had a couple of COVID quarantines, where we had officers quarantined, uh, who, uh, had an exposure or a possible exposure. Uh, so had that not happened, I think the whole department would have hit our, uh, our goal, which is to be, uh, the objective is specifically to be at minimum staffing no more than twenty-five percent of the time. Seven overdoses in January. Uh, we used Narcan on six of them. And that's our overdoses. So I made reference to this before. If you look at our overdoses over the years, they, they consistently creep up, including last year. Last year, I, I don't know if I made this clear in the last meeting or not, but we were up slightly from 2019. In 2019, we had a hundred and five overdoses. In 2020, we had a hundred and twenty-three. Um, the, the fatal overdoses were down somewhat, which is, which is always a good thing. Uh, but the total number of overdoses is still going up. Um, so that's, uh, obviously continues to be a problem for us. Uh, the calls for service in January were actually up about a hundred from what they were last year. Uh, so it was a busy month. Um, sixteen hundred and twelve calls is a pretty busy month. Uh, crashes were a little down still. Uh, we, we're normally around a hundred a month. We were at eighty-seven. Uh, arrests were up, uh, seventy-eight arrests. That's, that's about twenty arrests higher than, than an average month. Uh, so there's still a lot of stress in the community. There's still a lot of, uh, you know, behavior going on, disturbances going on that are, um, that lead to arrests. And, uh, if you look at the hotels and motels, uh, something really jumps off the page here in, in the Residence Inn. So last year in January, the Residence Inn had one call for service. Uh, last year, for the entire year, they had ninety-seven calls for service. But like, last month, they had thirty-one. Uh, I, I thought maybe that was a mistake, so, you know, I, I printed them all out, and there really were thirty-one calls for service. And they're all over the place. There are disturbances, medical calls, domestics, medical, you know, emergencies, mental subjects, suspicious incidents, thefts. I've reached out to their management to see if there's anything we can do to help them, uh, because they definitely had a bad month last month.
Yeah, sorry, Chief. Can I ask a question? Are they?
Sure.
You know, are they mostly local people that are just hanging out or coming from, you know, um, somewhere close in New Jersey?
You know, I, I can find out when they get back to me. That's one of the questions that I want to ask them. I mean, typically, the residents in are, are people traveling. Uh, and, and in many instances, traveling for business. You know, if, if Pico has, you know, an influx of workers, you'll see a lot of Pico people staying there, or companies that are subcontracting, uh, for, for Pico, for example. You know, but COVID's hit them just like everybody else, so, you know, the, the room rates have gone down and, and, you know, they have kind of the problems that budget motels have. And when you look at the calls for service that, that happened there last month, a lot of them are those kinds of calls for service. So I would imagine, um, they may well be local people who could afford the room and, and, uh, you know, it's cold out, so, you know, they want to stay inside. But I'll, I'll get some more details from the management there when they get back to me, and if there's anything we can do to help them to proactively address that, uh, we certainly will. That's, that's a big increase for them.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The rest of the, uh, the calls for service there are kind of average for, for what we typically see. Uh, this is, again, our, our rest data by race that we continue to update. Um, it's important to keep a close eye on that. That GIS data, uh, uh, technology that you guys approved tonight is really gonna help here to, to get more layers, uh, more levels of, of, uh, analysis out of this kind of data, and it'll give it a lot more depth. I'm looking forward to that. We did have one call, uh, that's worth mentioning. Uh, we had an armed suicidal subject out of New Jersey. Uh, his local PD in Delran pinged his phone and found that he was on Lincoln Highway. Uh, two of our officers, Officer Amler and Officer Goodwin, located the vehicle and conducted what we call a felony car stop. Uh, that's when we don't approach the vehicle and we give commands over the loudspeaker to have the person, uh, turn the vehicle off and exit the vehicle. Uh, they did recover a handgun and, um, got him to, uh, the Crisis Center at Lower Bucks Hospital to get treatment. So that, that could have gone horribly wrong, uh, and it was handled very well, so it, it went very well. Those are always tense situations. Uh, you know, if you watch the news long enough, you'll see one go sideways somewhere in the United States. Uh, so they did a nice job and, and took a tense situation and got somebody help. Uh, we did update our crime victims policy, uh, with, uh, the updated information on where crime victims can, uh, get services and have access to services in Pennsylvania. And I remember the shredder event. Um, so the, you that are scheduled for this year are, they're both Saturdays, April twenty-fourth and October thirtieth.
You know, when, um, that's usually a drug drop-off day too, is that, is that?
Yeah, they, they always match them up. Um, I'll have to, uh, put a slide in there to remind everybody of that as well, but we'll make sure when we advertise it, we advertise it that way.
All right, awesome.
And we've teamed up with the Sheraton, uh, to host training. So we have a training class coming up, uh, April twenty-second that'll be open to, uh, our officers and officers from other departments in the area, uh, put on by this organization called Street Cop Training. Uh, they do a really nice job. This, this, uh, training here I attended. Um, it has a lot of good, uh, safety practices and best practices for officers. Uh, so we'll be doing that on April twenty-second at the Sheraton. And then we have, uh, a search and seizure class that I've also attended, which is outstanding, that, uh, we'll be sending people to. Uh, we've had some major changes in Pennsyl- Pennsylvania search and seizure recently. Uh, our state Supreme Court has, uh, made a decision that really impacts how we search vehicles. And search and seizure is one of those areas that, that you, you need to constantly reinforce training for officers. Uh, you can't go to a class once and then, you know, serve a twenty-year career or thirty-year career and think you're gonna still be doing things right. There's a lot of change in this, uh, uh, area, and it's a perishable skill set, so, uh, we're happy to sponsor those two courses. And that's why I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Dents, I'm mute.
I'm sorry. Any questions for Chief Whitney, Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Boraski?
Um, I just have one thing, Chief. Are you, um, are you staying on for board comment? And if not, I was actually, and you can answer it now if the board's okay, but I was just gonna ask if you could, it's not, uh, um, about the presentation, but I didn't have nothing about that, but I was curious if you could touch on um, where we are right now or what the timeframe, frame is for our next accreditation process. So you could do that now, or you could wait until my board comment, whatever, you know, works for you. I just didn't want to miss you if you were leaving off the meeting.
Or no, I, I can stay, and, uh, the, the normal accreditation cycle is three years. So we got it back a year ago, so in two years, we'll be, uh, up for a site inspection again. Uh, that doesn't mean that, that nothing's happening with respect to it. Um, you know, every, every, every quarter, there's work being done to examine, uh, the policies that we have and the incident reports that are written to, uh, to get those proofs that are necessary to, uh, to demonstrate to the, um, the accreditation board that, uh, we're following the policies that we have. So that, that work continues throughout the year, every year, uh, but the site inspection happens once every three years.
I guess that was more my question. I, I, I did think we were about a year, year or so into our latest accreditation, so more so, I was kind of, you know, just kind of wanted to hear from you that, you know, we were still actively, constantly working on that, so, you know, I know we've had many discussions about the accreditation process, so I do, you know, appreciate the heads up and thank you for the answer. But that's all I have. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Any other questions, Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, thank you, Chief Whitney, for that report. Excellent job, as always.
Thank you.
That takes us to manager comment, Mr. Tequila.
I have a, a couple of items for the board today. The first one is to consider approval of a compensation increase for the township tax collector.
All right, um. We talked about a ten cents increase. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
That's correct, and we have prepared, uh, the resolution and the necessary documents uh, to have that go through. Let me, I'm just pulling it up now. It's a resolution of the Township of Falls, Bucks County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, establishing the compensation of the tax collector in and for said township. Uh, this is a matter that is required to be addressed by the board every four years. Uh, and it is the time before the tax collector, uh, election is going to be held. Uh, the tax collector election was last held in two thousand and seventeen. It's being held again this year in twenty twenty-one. And we are required to set the compensation before, uh, the petition period begins. The petition period began today. We were supposed to have our regularly scheduled meeting yesterday and would have set the compensation the day before. Uh, but since there was the holiday and we're, we're not meeting today, we're setting it today. Uh, the reason it's supposed to be done before the petition period or right at the beginning is anyone who is interested in the position should know what the compensation is going to be, uh, for the next, uh, four years. So since the petition period is just opening, anyone who is interested in running for the position will have more than adequate notice of knowing what the compensation is going to be if that were going to change whether or not they were going to run. So if the board is inclined to grant this, it should approve this resolution, and it would go into, uh, effect, uh, as the compensation for the tax collector.
Hey, any comments or questions from board members? For Mr. Clark or Mr. Tequila, Mr. Rocco?
I have none.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Boraski?
No.
And Mr. Palmer?
No.
And this is resolution number five, Mr. Tequila? Or six?
Six.
Okay. Resolution number twenty twenty-one hyphen six. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
Motion made and seconded. Um, Mr. Rocco, can you poll the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Tequila?
The board is being asked to consider, uh, release number five for general. Board is being asked to consider, uh, release number five for General Asphalt Paving Company. This is part of the twenty-nineteen Falls Township Road Improvement Program. Uh, it encompasses Rice Fletcher and Elbow. Uh, the work that has been completed, uh, is in accordance with the requirements contained in the plans and specification. Uh, the contract closeout documents have been submitted and are acceptable. This letter recommends release of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Tequita?
None.
No.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second, I move.
Motion made in a second, Mr. Rocco?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? I mean, yes.
All right.
Board is being asked to consider the purchase of fifteen trees as part of the tree vitalized program. Uh, each tree is at a cost of fifty dollars for a total of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Over fifty, five hundred and ninety-one trees have been purchased through the tree vitalized program by Falls Township.
Hey, any questions or comments? This is pretty straightforward as well.
Yeah, we've been doing, like I remember, so.
Yeah.
This is great on a night where we, um, where we just talked about removing trees, so, uh, it was a great night to bring this up.
Yeah. Okay, is there a motion to purchase the trees for seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Some moved.
Tag it.
Motion made in a second, Mr. Rocco?
Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
The board is being asked to, uh, ratify two declarations of snow emergencies, one for January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and the other for February seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
All right, this is pretty straightforward as well. We've had some significant storms. Second one kind of caused a little off guard. We were on the fence about what to do, and luckily we did declare another emergency because we had a few problems with people leaving their cars in the street where our plow trucks couldn't get through. Uh, unfortunately, there were a couple of cars actually towed. So, you know, it's not just something we just do just because. So if you hear us declare a snow emergency, you need to get your cars off the street. It's very important, you know, to keep the plows from crashing in the cars. It ends up costing everybody money and a lot of aggravation. So is there a motion to, uh, approve the, um, snow emergencies?
Some moved.
Tag it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Okay.
Last item I have, um, our donation request, uh, the township received donation requests from the following organizations. Fairliss Hills Athletic Association for six thousand dollars, Fall Soccer Club, as well as the Levittown Continental Little League, the amount of six thousand dollars. Uh, the Levittown Continental Little League has requested six thousand as well as, uh, township cover the cost of porta potties. The township included funding for the, in the twenty-twenty-one budget for these donation requests.
So are they all the Stephen mail?
Yes.
Okay, uh, any questions or comments?
No.
Mr. Palmer? Is there a motion then to approve these three, uh, donations?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second it.
Motion made in a second, and Mr. Rocco, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
I mean, yes.
All right. That's it?
That's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tequita. That takes us to board comment, Mr. Galloway.
Uh, no comment tonight, thank you.
Mr. Baraski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dent. I just have one, um, one item. I see Mr. Andrews, uh, is still on, and he did expect me to ask this, but I was, um, going to have him give an update on the geese situation at the Fawsonton Pond, uh, Martha Circle, Martha Drive area.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I can give you an update. Uh, we actually sent mailers out to the residents that back up to the Nottingham Pond. Uh, we did that last year. I know at the last meeting, uh, that question was asked if we did, uh, inform the residents. And we did do the mailer last year. Obviously, we didn't do the work. But this year, uh, the mailers went out last week, and I'm coordinating with Public Works to, you know, uh, put down, use that spray, that flight control spray. We're going to try that, monitor the situation, um, do, do a weekly log and kind of keep an eye on the situation, you know, and then, uh, update the board as we go forward. So I, I think, uh, we're going to hit the ground running this, this go around.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Andrews. I, I, I think that, um, I think that keeping that, keeping that data and, um, having Public Works keep a log, um, while we're using the products can, you know, really help us going forward. I mean, maybe, maybe we, you know, come next year, we're not even talking about this no more, but, you know, for the past few years, we've been, we've been trying to get down there and, and do this at the right time of the year. Um, I hope Mr. Mariani's watching and, um, and he hears this, that we're trying, you know, he, uh, and hey, I've been supporting this guy for years. I think this is, you know, worth a try. So I hope he's, uh, I hope he's watching this and he hears this, but, uh, thank you, Mr. Andrews. And one, one last question, uh, the new, um, the newcomer that's doing the geese management, did, did he have a chance to stop down there, or was there no need for him at this time?
We, we did, we did, we did look into that option right now. We, we felt we would try the, uh, the flight control spray and, you know, that we do have the lights in the pond, yeah, the light that it disturbs the geese. So we're going to try that approach first, see how it goes. That's kind of what we're doing this year. So we'll see how successful the product is, the other measures there, and then if that's something, you know, the board wants to consider going down the line, if it doesn't seem to work as well as we hope, you know, that could be something we could look at in the future.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Andrews, could, could you, uh, at some point, next time you talk to him and just make a note for me? Um, could you ask him about the standing water, like that pond? Like if, if there was a fountain in that pond, um, would it help? Would it help keep the, the geese off of the water at all? Um, you know, the other upside to that is I know, you know, every once in a while, we have the algae that grows and kills a lot of fish down there, so I kind of thought that might kill, um, you know, no pun intended, but it might help both situations, um, the geese and, and the fish. But could you just ask him his thoughts on, on, uh, the, the, uh, what a fountain would do in that, in that area?
Yeah, I will, yeah. And I could probably even make a, make arrangements to have him go or just take a look at it, you know, even if we're not going to do something right away. We can do something down the line, absolutely.
Hmm, great. And you remember like last, not this past summer, summer for that, we had the thousands of fish that died off. You remember that as well, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I don't know, you know, might, might keeping that, uh, pond air rated, uh, might help the fish situation too for the, for the residents down there, but right, that's all I have. Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks, Mr. Dent.
Mr. Palmer?
Not for that this time.
Mr. Rocco?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
All right. Um, all right, excellent meeting, everyone. I know it's still weird doing this virtual thing. I still have my hiccups. Um, I missed the last meeting and Mr. Baraski did a great job filling in for me, so thank you to him. The only thing, I did get an email today, uh, actually during the meeting that says the Saint Patrick's Day Parade was officially canceled. So I guess people kind of suspected that, but this is two years in a row with no Saint Patrick's Day parade in Bucks County. It's really, really strange. Um, so everybody, you know, we have more snow coming Thursday allegedly. Hopefully that's the last of it, and then it gets warm and it all goes away and never comes back again like last year. Uh, I hope everyone stays safe and see you in March now. It's already March. It's crazy. Everyone have a good night, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, thank you.